Okay, it being after six P M. I'll call this December twenty second meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. And we are at the police station. First order of business would be to join me in strolling the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, first up, approval of minutes from eleven seventeen, twelve two, and twelve eight.
Funny. One of us lapsed in from each one of those meetings.
That's why we had to step it back, right?
We've been carrying them over.
Okay, so, let's see, from eleven seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve that.
I will second. I'll favor that.
Aye.
All right. December second, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Still moved. You can't.
I can't. That's you.
I can't. Still moved.
Motion made. Did you?
No. You moved, right?
Yeah.
You second.
Okay, yeah. All right. It was him and I.
All right. I'll favor that.
Aye, aye.
And then, December eighth, I'll entertain a motion for that. Now you're up.
Still moved.
And I will second. I'll favor that.
Aye.
Good. So, approval of warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number thirteen for four hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. C M R P C warrant number one oh two nine for forty-eight thousand, forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. School warrant one oh three oh for a hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents. And general warrant number one zero three one for a hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. I'll favor that.
Aye.
Moving on. Approval of CARES Act funds. Fire department's requesting some CARES Act money to repair some equipment. I'm not sure we have a line item for that, so let's pass over that. Although he wants it to go to the reserve fund.
He filled that out, but he wanted to see if it would qualify for CARES first.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, then he needs it from the reserve fund, so.
All right, so I'm looking to the CARES Act. Let me see if there's a line item that'll cover that. And if there is, we'll take it out of that.
Okay. And that's just the invoice that goes with that.
Okay.
And then that's just a note.
Oh, that's okay. That was a request. So, eight hundred dollars for the senior center. Handheld scanner with U S B cable, synchronize some software. I'll entertain a motion to approve that as a COVID-related expense.
Still moved. Second.
I'll favor.
Aye, aye.
And then, there's a series of them for the phones, right? There's a whole bunch here?
Yes.
So, that's one of the things we, I think we already voted on it. Right? On approving CARES Act money for it?
Yes.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices for the phone system upgrade.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second on that. I'll favor. Did we get all the kinks worked out of these phones?
I believe we have.
Okay.
Senior center included?
Yes, as far as I know, last update, it was working, so. A tech came out and fixed it off.
Sharon will be all excited.
What's the spectrum?
That one is just for the installation of internet at the senior center and the highway department.
That's related to the phone?
Yeah, just the installation is covered under CARES Act, so.
So, that's a hundred and, no.
Hundred and forty-eight, I think it was.
Well, there's four ninety-one, but then it's one ninety-eight CARES.
Oh, one ninety-eight is coming out of CARES and the rest is coming out of their own line items for their normal monthly fee.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Still moved. Second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
And then, what's this cleanup stuff?
Uh, yep.
Signage?
That was ordered for, like, when we finally did the vaccine and we're gonna be doing a drive-through clinic cones and signage and stuff like that.
Okay. Three fifteen, that's a line item in there, I know. I'll entertain a motion to approve that one.
Still moved. Second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
And then, the school. Fourteen hundred and fifty dollars for sprayers.
I think Jason needs to do that one too. And this one, so.
So, the school wants fourteen fifty for the new sprayer. This was the purchase of two additional. Oh, yeah, I think we already approved that one a long time ago. They're just submitting the invoice now? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve that one.
Still moved. Second.
And then, a request for paraprofessional three thousand, four hundred and sixteen for a paraprofessional. Treat a motion to approve that.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. I'll favor that one. And then, this one is for speech therapy. Thirteen hundred bucks. For the school. I'll entertain a motion to approve that one.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made. Second. I'll favor. And what's this? Pro forma?
Oh, that's the computers.
Oh, computers?
Yep. The laptops in the second stations. Finally.
Did you get me one?
No. You wouldn't know how to use it.
I'll entertain a motion for that.
Put solid tape on there or something, I think.
Yeah.
Still moved.
Six thousand, three fifty-six.
Second.
I'll favor. Aye.
Aye.
Now, what next?
Donuts. Excuse me? Donuts. I heard.
Transfer request for a selectman?
Yep. The advertising went over forty-five dollars, so I just wanna transfer out of purchasing services.
Okay. Transfer from town office expenses to selectman advertising to cover a negative balance. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Still moved. Second. Is National Grid still paying their thing for their poll hearings and stuff?
Yes, but that goes into the general fund. It doesn't come back to my line item.
So, you have to put out for it and then it goes there?
Yeah.
Just a question. So, we'll never see it?
Not really.
The reserve fund request for the fight department, that's the one we talked about, right?
Yes.
Do you keep track on that, that they pay that?
Terror does.
Okay. And just, just a follow-up?
Do we have anything under old business? Anybody? Got anything under old business? You got anything?
Just me. It's about as old as it gets.
All right, so license renewals.
I have the list in there for you to approve. Alcohol renewal, common vic, auctioneer school table, jukebox, live entertainment, press fee, cluster. And then, I have all of these for you guys to sign, but if you want, I can just leave them in the office and you can come in over the weekend.
That would be awesome.
I can do that.
Taking all the fun out of it.
Do you wanna read the renewal?
Can we do it as written? Or do we have to read it?
Well, nobody all, nobody all know who's up the licenses if we say as written unless we post it online. You can do that line.
I can. I can post it as part of the minutes if you want.
Read the first page, Jason. I'll read the second page.
Signed.
Do you wanna do that or do you want me to read them? I don't care. Do you want me to read them?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so, I move to approve license renewals for twenty twenty-one alcohol renewals. Still Hearts, that's Stephen Doris, forty-seven Fourth Street, Stars and Stripes, John Eccleston, eleven Maple Street, North Brookfield Liquors, De Palles, Espital, two twenty-one Main Street, Bob's Deli and Variety, Him and Kumar Patel, thirty-nine Grove Street, North Brookfield Sportsman's Club, Phil Corchane, twenty Pointon Road, American Legion Post forty-one, Tim Nason, one sixty-three Main Street, Statz Sports Pub and Grill, Thomas Warr, three forty-one North Main Street, Common Ground, Roger Larson, thirty-one East Brookfield Road. Let me just go right through the list? Do them all at once?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Common Vic Renewals, Virem Corporation, eighteen School Street, Brookfield Orchards, twelve Lincoln Road, North Brookfield Pizza Palace, sixty School Street, North Brookfield Subway, one sixty-three Main Street, Hannaford Food and Drug, number eleven, five Gilbert Street, Jim's Pizza, two thirty-one Main Street, North Brookfield Liquors, two twenty-one Main Street, Bob's Deli and Variety, thirty-nine Grove Street, American Legion Post forty-one, one sixty-three Main Street, North Brookfield Sportsman's Club, twenty Pointon Road, Still Hearts Incorporated, forty-seven Fourth Street, Stars and Stripes, eleven Maple Street, Thomas F. Warr, D B A Statz Pub, three forty-one North Main Street, Algoos Convenience, two twenty-five North Main Street, Common Ground Cider Works, thirty-one East Brookfield Road. Auctioneers Renewals, Dupree Metal Recycling L L C, nine Brown Road, Pool Table Renewals, Stars and Stripes, and Still Hearts, Jukebox, Pinball, and Video Game Renewals, Stars and Stripes. One pinball, one video, one jukebox, American Legion Post forty-one, one jukebox, Still Hearts, one jukebox, two pinball, Statz Sports Pub and Grill, one jukebox. All right, John, you're up.
Live Entertainment Renewals, North Brookfield Sportsman's Club Incorporated, Thomas Warr, D B A Statz Sports Pub and Grill, Still Hearts Incorporated, Common Ground. Class two renewals, Country Auto Body Incorporated, sixty-nine Donovan Road, Dupree Metal Recycling L L C, nine Brown Road, Stephen M. Woods, D B A S M D Woods Auto Sales, eighty-three Shore Road. And class three renewals, Dupree Metal Recycling L L C, nine Brown Road.
I've already made the motion. Second.
I just had a question on Thomas F. Warr, D B A Statz Sports.
He's still owned.
He's still on to it?
Yes.
Okay.
He hasn't transferred anything over.
And everybody's gotta put in new applications every year? Is that, is that how it goes?
Well, they have, I send out a sheet that I get from A B C C and they just sign it. And then, I give everything to Lisa and she makes sure everyone's up to date on taxes.
Okay. All right. Motion made. Second. I'll favor.
Aye.
So, Keith from Common Ground.
Hi, Keith from Common Ground. We got Roger Larson, Sidney Larson here with me too. We had a couple things we wanted to talk about. First off, the on-premise drinking license. Our business is very unique, whereas we, we have to get a on-premise license for farmer brewery, an on-premise license for farmer winery, an on-premise license for having a combination of both. The way you, you structure your fees is it's four fifty, four fifty, and four fifty, even though we're a single premise. So, we were hoping, because our, our business is kinda unique and we are just one premise, that perhaps two of those licenses you would, you would reduce or significantly and, you know, charges the same amount for, for an on-premise, being one premise as, as the other on-premise locations in town. If you would consider that.
Who sets the fee?
I believe we set the fee, but we have to report to the state of, like, each license and how much they paid.
Cause that's the thing, I, I remember we, we issued it and then we sent it to the A B C C and they came back and said, oh, you need these other two. So, that's the, that's how we found out.
Depending on the situation and their explanation is, they really don't know. It's just, it's another fee. You know, that's what they were, it's redundant, he says, the way, because we're literally, and the way he kind of explained it to me is that because we brew beer here and we make wine cider over here, the reason they have to get that H combination is that if for some reason, somebody was drinking beer in the wine side and wine in the beer side, the license is covered by the combination.
Well, I don't understand why you can't just do a combination.
We asked that too and they said, that's not how it works.
Of course.
Yeah.
That's what makes it a unique situation for us is to, we're only drinking in one place, but we've gotta buy three liquor licenses.
What happens when somebody combines the beer and the cider? Do we need to do?
We have the H, which we do.
We're not throw up, I think. Can we look into that or, and check with the state or is that something we can do or?
We've actually checked around with some other, other wineries and breweries who have the same two, two licenses. And so far, we have only found one person who has the third license. I think it's something that's new for them and really their only explanation was that's just how it is. So, it just triples the cost for us.
But you gotta get the license.
Right.
You're just saying the fee.
The, yes.
Fee set for, do we even have a, a fee for a combination license?
No. No.
So, then why was it the four fifty? Where'd that come from? That come from the A B C C?
It's the on-premise license. There's like a club license, a restaurant license, a liquor store off-premise license, and then an on-premise license. So, they're all broken down.
So, technically, we have three on-premise licenses, even though we're one premise.
Right.
Yeah, but so, if I understand correctly, you need one for cider, one for wine.
Cider and wine are the same.
Yeah.
So, what's the other one?
Beer.
Beer.
Oh, beer. And that's, okay, so cider wine is one and then beer is the other and then you need a combination.
Because we have both in the same location.
He can order a beer and I can order a wine and we can sit together.
Well, that's cozy. Otherwise, you'd have to have green tea.
I don't understand it either, so.
So, so what happens at, at like Hearts, for instance, if you order a beer and she orders a wine?
They only have one license. It's a pouring license. It doesn't matter.
But they don't make anything.
Because we make our own product. And that's why we have to have these individual licenses, because they have a, like, what you said, what they call a farm brewery and they have a farm winery license, because we manufacture it. Now, there is another license that they also, which would affect us in only one license, would be what's called a.
Farmer distillery.
The farm distillery, which is another one of that, but if we were to just go somewhere and serve our product and just our products, it's called a taproom. And you just get a license for a pouring, one license to pour in the taproom. So, it's kinda, because we manufacture it, we have, we have three there.
Seems like just a way for the.
It's all for them to get different fees, because every time we apply for another license, it's two hundred dollars for the state.
Can we waive fees?
I'm not sure. I do have to send a report to the state. I've never not, I've never gotten anything.
Cause I, I can, I can see the different products one, but if you're doing a combination and you've already paid for each product individually, why would you, why would you do the combination?
I can, I can check with A B C C and see what they have to say about it. If, do they need to pay for each individual license, you know, when I report it to the state? Are they gonna question?
Do we have to get individual pouring licenses?
Yeah.
Or is the combination license good enough for, as a, one license with few people in town? I guess that's how it would be asked.
Well, that's.
But there is no combination license.
There isn't, but we could set a new, we could set a fee for a combination license if.
Right.
Yeah, one dollar.
True.
I mean, come on.
Yeah.
If, if you've already paid for each thing individually and you're serving them on the same location and the only reason you need that other license is because you serve two products.
Yeah.
I mean, what are, what are regular bars? Is, you walk into Statz and you can buy beer and wine in the same?
But they don't make it. They don't make it there. That's, that's.
Right. A B C C does this because we manufacture it there and we drink it in the same place.
It's still, it's still ridiculous.
It is.
Definitely agree. Definitely agree.
We have many conversations with these people and it's, sometimes you talk to one supervisor, give you an opinion and the other will give you another opinion. It's just because they just have formulas that they gotta fill out, things they sign off and check off and to save, and all it comes down to is really, they basically saying it's just an other fee for the state.
It's, it's not for the state, though. I mean, we paid them two hundred dollars last year. We don't pay them every year. We just pay you now.
Yeah.
So, last year, we paid them two hundred dollars to process the applications and then we pay you.
Yearly. Yeah.
Oh, so I see. So, the A B C C, cause it had to go to the A B C C.
Right, right, right.
So, you have to cover their costs, right? So, that's what you're saying.
That was the two hundred dollars.
But now that you're, you're in the A B C C's.
System.
System.
Yeah.
It just comes to us.
Yeah, they have to pay us a fee every year.
So, you add the show at six hundred. I think we can do two for each.
Yeah.
Yes.
To get started.
For the pouring permit.
Plus the thirteen fifty here.
Well, I think if, if, if we only have to report to the state that they paid the fee.
We have to pay, we have to, I have to fill out a sheet that says how much we got in fees for each category of license. And they have a list of who we have and what category license they have. So, I don't know if A B C C is gonna come back and say they didn't pay for all their licenses or if it's something we can set, you know.
Yeah.
Well, isn't the other, are the other places gonna complain if we drop?
No other place has two licenses, though.
Well, they're the only ones. Yeah, they're the only ones that have it.
We have technically three licenses.
Yeah.
Right, so you, you couldn't mess with the one that everybody else has.
Ours is a farmer's series.
Right, and there's no one else in town that has a, that has licenses like they do.
Yeah.
They're unique.
They're just trying to make it so we don't, that size comes up with everybody else in town.
So, we set, and if anybody is in the same circumstance that they have the two licenses because they're required to have it and then they're required to have a third license.
Do the same thing?
Set it, yeah. Set that license fee at a dog.
Pay the, the main fee, the first fee, whatever it is for whatever that license is and then after that.
All subsequent, yeah. Yeah, the initial, initial license.
The first one would be twelve fifty and a buck.
And then, yeah.
Whatever, yeah. No, but that's, you know, I, so, you know, seems a little.
Do you want me to write up like a policy and then we can?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's probably the way to go. If anybody's similarly situated.
Not right now, but you never know what'll happen in the future, so.
It just, to me, doesn't make sense to get that, to make them pay again for the third one that covers.
Both.
Both of them combined.
Yeah.
Each individually and then combined. So.
It's just like when we used to have the tavern, before we changed our license, we'd request to have an event outside in the parking lot, in a fenced-in area. We'd have to get a separate, you know, one-day license. And you have to pay, but it doesn't, like I said, it's not a big fee, but it's.
Yeah, this wouldn't affect that, though. If you want a one-day pouring license for a location, other than where the license is covered, you'll have to come back. Yeah, I think those are like a hundred bucks, right?
A hundred dollars.
Yeah. But you'll make, conceivably, you make a lot more than that. That's why it makes sense to get it, but, did you make a motion?
What do you want? You want a dollar?
To create a policy or, can you change it now without having the policy or what?
You wanna write out the policy and do it next, at our next meeting?
No, cause we'll vote to set whatever fee is commensurate with that license category. Is there a special license category? Is that called a certain, is it called a certain?
Farmer's Series pouring permit.
Yep. The nineteen H is what is, is the combination license.
Combination.
Farmer's Series nineteen H.
There you go. Farmer's Series nineteen H combination license.
So, you still have to get the wine license and you have to get the beer license.
Yes.
And then, this one would be the together.
Right.
Which you already have. So, we're waiving the fee?
So, nobody will have a combination license without first having the beer and the wine.
Right.
So, yeah.
And, and, and there's also the farmer's distilling license too that can be added to this. And then, there, that's another license.
Well, let's not jump that.
Let's do one at a time.
Let's do that.
This is why the, a lawyer was just explaining it to me. He's going through all that somewhere else because somebody was adding that to their.
So, is a buck enough to do the paperwork?
Yeah, it's not any.
It's the subsequent one.
You wanna waive the fee?
More work.
They all happen at the same time.
And she has to report how much we've taken in on it.
Yeah.
Do, do we have to report a fee?
Yes. We have to report, so I say like, club licenses for at this amount equals how much I got. So, like, if the fee was five hundred dollars and I had, you know, four licenses at five hundred dollars, I took in two thousand in fees and I have to send a report to A B C C.
But it's not per, per premise?
No, it's not per premise. It's per type of license.
And does this license already have a type?
No.
When you report? How do you report the four fifty?
I've never reported a farmer's anything. It's a club license, a restaurant license, an off-premise, so the liquor stores.
See, they're new. They're new, so this is.
Yeah, this is new. So, they have a pouring part. They have on-premise pouring, but they're a little different because they brew their own stuff. We've never had a brewery here before, so. We could set a new license fee altogether for the brewery.
So, how about, how about this? We, we table it for today, look into if we have to report it separately. If we don't report it separately, then we just waive that fee for that.
For that last license, for the combo?
Right? And then, we can decide.
Yeah, two weeks. We should be able to find out in two weeks.
Two weeks.
And then, make the policy so that anybody else that comes into town with the same situation, they do.
Yeah, because we'll have to, we'll have to spell out that the first initial application that goes in for the A B C C will require the three licenses and the fee. And then, every subsequent issue, renewal of that, the town will waive its portion of the fee.
Yeah.
For that one.
Yeah, for the last.
Right.
Yeah, for the combo. Okay.
So, just to clarify that, if I came in and just became a farmer winery, say I was Hardwick Winery and I came to West, North Brookfield and I opened up a farmer winery, I don't need that, that H.
You wouldn't, because you would just be.
Just because we have a farmer winery license and a farmer brewery license, so we need one that allows them to co-mingle.
Yeah.
Right.
At the same place here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I would, I would thinking that about the fee being on the combination license, so it covers everything. And then, like I said, the, the other ones are just the, you know, separate, a separate fee for the, because the combination's gonna allow us to do everything and that's what we're trying to pour everything, right? What I'm trying to say. And then, the, so, if we pay the full rate of the combination and then, like you said, a short rate of the other two licenses, at least each license is covered and you get your main fee for the combination.
I think the licenses are covered as long as the selectman approve it. I don't think it has much to do with the fee and stuff.
No, but I'm saying, but, but the reporting the fees.
Yeah.
So, what's the difference between a farmer's winery and what you're doing now?
We, because we make wine cider, that's one license. That's a farmer winery. We brew beer, so that's a farmer brewery license. And because we have the two in the same building.
Right.
Under the same name.
It's not about the making of the product. It's about the serving, pouring it.
But you had just said, what if you came in with something else?
Just a single one, then you just pay for the one, you know, license.
Oh, okay, excluding what you're doing here.
Right, yeah, something else.
If you came in next door and wanted to just have a farmer's winery.
Right.
It would be four fifty.
Just a one fee. Right, four fifty done.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think we need to look into the various types and the requirements from the ABCC.
Yeah.
Um, and then we'll be able to create some kind of a policy, um, so that you don't get double charged on stuff. I mean, it may, it may turn out that the ABCC will require us to do the, the beer and then require us to do the wine, but then the combination one, we can probably, but we'll check into that if, if that's the case, if we could just get away with the combination one, that's fine too, but.
That's very fair.
Yeah. North Brookfield's growing, all these feet you have thought of.
No, huh?
Bring some more stuff.
Alright, I, I'm supposed to table this till, on our meeting.
Motion made a second, all my favor, alright, alright.
And actually, I, I got another issue.
Only one at a time.
Yeah.
Uh, um, behind our property, Common Ground, is a town owned, town owned conservation land, uh, the sizable piece of property, and we just wanted permission to have our, our guests access that property, if, if, uh, if we could go in and put some hiking trails, uh, through that property, at our expense.
That's the.
Conservation.
Common would have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I walked back there, the day we talked about it, it's pretty wet back there, or some places.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah, the, the swamp is actually owned by the, uh, by National Grid.
Yeah.
Everything, everything behind there, you get, uh, forget me not, Brooke runs back there, uh, and then it's, 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 uh, quite steep.
It starts to go up way in the back.
Yeah, I mean, it, it might be, um, something nice if you could, you know, do like, um, foot bridges or something like that, uh, but that, you'd have to go to conservation and then you'd have to go through the.
Yeah, it's actually an existing foot bridge from, uh, from previous owner, uh, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't go across it, though.
Yeah. It's still pre-existing, though.
Yeah, I would have them look at it, and then you can do your paperwork, uh.
Yeah, with your permission, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll pursue it.
Any liability, it's town owned land.
No, I don't think so.
People walk on town land all the time, so.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we would be.
I think if conservation's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
You know, just keep it clean. You know.
Who are you gonna get to make a trail?
I heard you have plenty of free time.
Well, this, this guy.
Done one, move on to another.
Yeah.
We don't want to get bored.
Yeah.
Well, he has an undisclosed project that he's moving on to, we haven't found out what that is yet, so.
I will tell.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Thank you for your time, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And once again, thank you for coming to town. Appreciate it.
We're kind of enjoying it down there, to be honest with you, yeah.
That's cool.
If you haven't noticed, we hang out down there in Cooley Close.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, public comment section, anybody comments, concerns, complaints?
You don't have to think of anything if you don't want to, I mean, if you didn't have anything on the computer.
No, well, wrapping up the year here, you know, I just, I just kind of say, you know, it's, it's been kind of a tough year for everybody, but I do think there's been a lot of progress made in town on various things, and, uh, I appreciate, you know, the progress moving forward and everybody who's putting all the time. I know, you know, you guys put in a lot more time than just your hour or so here every day, and, uh, you know, whether people agree with everything you do or not, I know you guys work hard, and, uh, I for one appreciate everything that's been happening, so.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'd like to shout out to the highway department, they did a really good job on the sidewalks and the roads. And before I was after that bad storm, clear, loved it.
Oh, nice.
They need to get more good, positive, uh, reinforcement, they, they're working out over there.
They do. I watched them, I was out there shuffling, they were going back and forth.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright. Set the tax rate?
Yeah, anything else? Anybody?
No, I only get two minutes, so.
We do have a six thirty executive session, so.
We're late. Alright, yeah, read the tax policy thing, set the tax rate, it's been set.
If you want the quick.
Yeah, just.
This is the tax rate from last year, this is the tax rate from this year.
Oh, I gotta get to the bed now?
Yep, it's all you.
It's not bad.
Um, so FY twenty, the tax rate was fifteen forty-two, and the tax rate set now is fifteen seventy-four. So, what, thirty, thirty-two cents? So, the rate went up thirty-two cents. What's that, per thousand?
Per thousand.
Yeah.
Not horrible.
Not horrible. Alright, anything else?
Do we have to?
Carolina done.
Okay that, or is it done?
No, we okayed it before, they're just telling us, that's, um, we voted on, uh, so, on to take a motion, um, to enter executive session for, it was number six, I think they said, right?
Yeah.
Which I can't remember, was it the, oh, the, to.
Discuss.
Discuss the purchase of property.
I move to going to executive session, um, and we will exit executive session only to adjourn. Second.
Motion made a second, eh?
Jason, try this, yes.
Bill Keighley, yes.
John Tripp, yes.
Have a good day, guys.
See you, Brandon.
Have a good night, everybody, and Merry Christmas, everybody.